Good evening. By executive order N 2920 issued on March 18th, 2020, Newport Mesa Unified School District Board meetings will be closed to the public. Spanish interpretation will be available via the Zoom link. Welcome, everyone. I'm calling the meeting to order at 5 o'clock. It is a special meeting and we really wanted to get this meeting in before we go on spring break because we have two really big topics to start about. So we will begin with opening ceremonies, moment of reflection, and pledge of allegiance to the flag led by trustee Orsolu. Please rise.
... of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call vote. Mrs. Amesqua.
Trustee Yelsey.
Here.
Trustee Barto.
Here.
Trustee Metoyer.
Here.
Trustee Anderson.
Here.
Trustee Crane.
Here.
Trustee Orsolu.
Here.
Trustee Wagen.
Here.
Mr. Lee Sung.
Here.
Adoption of the agenda?
I move we adopt the agenda.
Second.
Moved by trustee Barto, seconded by trustee Wagen. Roll call vote, Mrs. Amesqua.
Trustee Yelsey.
Yes.
Trustee Barto.
Yes.
Trustee Metoyer.
Yes.
Trustee Anderson.
No. My understanding was this was about secondary. I was surprised to see it on here the other day, so that's why I'm voting no.
Trustee Crane.
Yes.
Trustee Orsolu.
Yes.
Trustee Wagen.
Yes.
Community input on special agenda items only. Clerk Metoyer will read this statement and we have a total of 27 comments received. 19 are on 7A approved transition of secondary schools to full day in-person instruction to four days per week with distance learning, one day per week, beginning the week of April 26, 2021. And we have eight speakers on item 7B approved continuation of cloud campus grades TK through 12 for the 2021-2020 school year. Because we have more comments for item 7A, I'm going to limit it to two minutes per speaker so that we can try to get as many as we can in. So, Mrs. Fish, would you begin calling? Oh, I'm sorry, trustee Metoyer.
Thank you. Speakers wishing to address the board on special agenda topics have submitted the appropriate comment card on the district website by 11:00 a.m. today, April 8, 2021. Comments on the agenda items are limited to three minutes per comment, up to 30 minutes per topic. Today it will be two minutes per comment. A speaker may not relinquish his or her time to another person.
May I ask a point of order question?
Pardon?
May I ask a point of order question?
Yes.
What was the rationale, Mr. Lee Sung, for having 7B at this meeting rather than at a regular board meeting where more parents would be participating and we would have had official results back from parent surveys?
There's a timeliness to get the cloud campus officially approved by the board for next school year so that we can continue our planning purposes. This doesn't only affect cloud, but it affects every school in the district.
Right. So I think because it's so important for me, I would have liked to see it at a regular board meeting. We haven't gotten all of the information that I feel that we asked for, including the financial implications. So I'm disappointed to see it today and not at a regular board meeting. Thank you.
Okay. And I also want to clarify something that I did notify the board in advance that this item would appear on this special board meeting agenda.
Okay. Mrs. Fish, would you begin calling members of the public?
Thank you, Ms. Yelsey. Our first speaker is Arsham Dionisian. You have three minutes to speak. Please unmute yourself, state your name for the meeting record, and begin speaking.
Hello, my name is Arsham Dionisian. I am a student, currently junior year at Corona Del Mar High School. Dear Superintendent Lee Sung and NMUSD Board of Trustees, please vote no to going back for four days of in-person learning. We are good where we are at. I do not want to go distance and do not want to go forward. Please, we are not ready yet. Look at Michigan and how they are at a COVID epicenter of the United States right now because they opened too early. Even though I am a Republican, please, we are not ready yet. Please vote no. Thank you and have a great evening.
Thank you. All right. Our next speaker is named Ava Erhart, who I do not see listed in the queue. So we'll move next to Tamara Fairbanks. You have three minutes. Please unmute yourself and begin speaking.
Good evening. When employees, your trustees, when employees express safety concerns, it is from a place of experience. It was only a short time ago when we have resolved the toxic gases that permeated our classrooms at Estancia, gases that had been reported for over a decade that had been ignored. It was even a shorter time when we had rats running all over Dodge Hall and Newport Harbor High School. We even had kids sitting on the floor in science classrooms. When employees ask about their safety, this is not a request of fear. It is from experience. When these secondary employees request a plan that fosters academic achievement and its safety, they do that because they care about their students. They care about hospitalizations in ages 10 through 25. They care about the amounts of students who come in and out of quarantine on a regular basis. They care about changing the schedule right before state testing. They care about each student and want to make time for them without getting distracted by Zoom. They care regardless of what is going on in the political sphere and they want their employer to care about their students just as much as they do. Trustees, please consider the humanity of our students and do what is safe. Let's not continue our legacy of ignoring safety issues at the secondary level. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Christina Morel. I'm not locating in the queue, followed by Jennifer Jones. There we go. Jennifer, please, you have three minutes. Please unmute yourself, state your name for the meeting record, and begin speaking. Next speaker would be Julie Austin Beck, who is also not online, followed by Linda Hernandez. I don't locate. All right. The next speaker would be Jennifer Frank. You have three minutes. Please unmute yourselves, state your name for the meeting record, and begin speaking. Two minutes, I'm sorry.
Hi, thank you. My name is Jennifer Frank. I am the mother of a Newport Harbor High School freshman student. I'm also an instructor at Orange Coast College, and so I'm experiencing the educational aspects of COVID, both as a parent and as an educator. I'm seeing both my son and my students at OCC suffering in their education because it is on Zoom, and I applaud the best efforts of the district to have made this past year what it could be for the students, but with vaccinations readily available for all teachers and administrators and with students over the age of 16 soon to be able to get the Pfizer vaccination, I think it is incumbent upon the board to get our students back in school in person for as many hours as possible every week. Their education is suffering and at this point, we have mitigated as many health factors as possible and it is time to get them back. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker. So the next person on our list is Kim R. Espinosa, who does not seem to be online, followed by N slash A, but there's no listing like that in the queue. The next card is from Kevin Thompson, who also does not seem to be online. Following that, the next card is Carla Rivera. You have two minutes. Please unmute yourself, state your name for the meeting record, and begin speaking. Carla Rivera. Okay, I see her name, but she's not unmuting herself, so we'll go on to the next speaker, which is, who is Tyler Parks. Tyler, you have two minutes. Please unmute yourself, state your name for the meeting record, and begin speaking.
Hello, this is Tyler Parks. Tonight, you are being asked to approve a plan to return secondary students to school four days per week. A vote to approve the return of secondary students to anything less than five days of in-person instruction is not a vote in favor of the best education interests of the students. It is a vote in favor of the Newport Mesa Federation of Teachers, a continuation of the educational inequity between primary and secondary students that you have allowed to occur, and a willful violation of the California Constitution and SB 98. Tonight, every trustee has an opportunity, a choice, and an obligation to stand with the students and the community and make a motion and a vote to return secondary schools to regular five-days-per-week in-person instruction. In an email from the district from July 2020, the district announced the board's adoption of its three-level plan. Key to this plan was a plan for returning to 100% in-person instruction. In numerous subsequent district communications, the district promoted and boasted of being able to flip a switch and immediately return to the classroom. So I asked, where is the plan? Where is the switch? Trustees are only checks and balances of the superintendent, personnel, and the teachers' union. It is the responsibility of the board to do more than to vote to approve or disapprove items occurring on an agenda. Trustee oversight and demanding accountability of district personnel is not a partisan issue. It's not Newport Beach versus Costa Mesa or East Side versus West Side. Many parents feel that their own grassroots.
Excuse me, that is your two minutes. Thank you. All right. Our next speaker card is from Britt Doughty. You have two minutes. Please unmute yourself, state your name for the meeting record, and begin speaking.
Good afternoon. I'm Britt Doughty. I'm a teacher at Ensign Intermedia School and a member of the NMFT Executive Board, and I want to have all of our students back in classroom 100%, and I have found distance learning to be very hard for students and for me professionally. I also care very deeply about the safety and welfare of our students and our community. However, I am opposed to the resolution as it is currently proposed for several reasons. First, the majority of adults in Newport Mesa have not received any COVID vaccination. Very few of our students have gotten a dose, and that will change in the next few weeks when all persons over the age of 16 have access to a vaccine. There are also some employees that are just now getting their first dose and won't have full immunity until early May. Secondly, the CDC and Dr. Fauci yesterday reported that the U.S. still needs to be cautious to prevent another COVID surge, and the dominant variant of COVID in the U.S. is now the most contagious and dangerous UK variant. The CDC and Dr. Fauci also stated that they are concerned that more young people, including those in ages 10 to 19, are now starting to become infected. Thirdly, our elementary schools have worked hard over the past month to put together quality plans that keep kids separated by classroom. They have separate areas on the fields during recess, designated tables for lunch, staggered lunchtimes by grade level, plexiglass barriers for each student desk. Students within the same grade level don't interact with other teachers. Parents have staggered pickup and drop-off times to prevent crowding. None of those plans are in place for secondary schools for this current proposal. We need a better plan. So in summary, consider how the current plan increases risk of exposure to students, parents, and some employees, and we gain a little bit of instructional time for some, but not all of our students. I urge you to vote no, delay, or modify the plan.
Thank you. Our next speaker, our next card is from Julie Means. Julie, you have two minutes. Please unmute yourself, state your name for the meeting record, and begin speaking.
Hi, this is Julie Means, and I wanted to say thank you to the board for doing their best in proposing a plan that would put our students in line with the guidelines that we're getting from the county and the state, as well as national, to have our students back in school full-time. In doing so, I believe you have the best interests of students at heart, and my only concerns are that in having students return to school full-time, that you make sure that their social and emotional well-being is ensured. I saw some fantastic materials prepared for elementary students, and I would like to see that same sort of thing prepared for the secondary teachers and students as well. This is a huge shift for many students to go back, and the four-day-a-week plan is in line with what the current schedule is and would make a much smoother transition. Also, I would hope that you would encourage people over spring break to continue safe health practices to make sure that the rates continue to remain low and to drop. Again, I know you have the best interests at heart for our students, and I would encourage you to go forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next comment card is from Kimberly Claytor. Please, you have two minutes. Mute yourselves, state your name for the meeting record, and begin speaking.
Thank you. Good evening. It's good to see you tonight. My name is Kimberly Claytor, and I am a teacher of students at Corona Del Mar High School and middle school. Given the focus over the past year on safety due to the pandemic, your decisions have literally impacted and maybe even saved lives. Thank you for all your thoughtful consideration, and I echo Britt and Doughty and Tamara Fairbanks' comments. I'll be speaking tonight on behalf of members of Newport Mesa Federation of Teachers. As I understand, one of the ways you've been able to gather sentiment from your employees is by holding small meetings here and there. We appreciate you seeking input and hope that the information I'm about to share will be held in high regard. When we learned of the plan to return secondary students to 100% in-person instruction four days a week, our members reached out and we immediately created a survey, and within 48 hours, we were able to get about half of our members at the secondary level to respond. We have diverse opinions. Over half of the membership is against your plan. About 30% is in favor. The remainder was neutral. When we asked our members to rank three different choices, stay in the hybrid, return to 100% in-person with a 19-20 bell schedule, and return students to 100% in-person with four days a week, 60% of the responding members said that staying with the current hybrid plan was the best option. The other two options had 20% each. Over 60% of the responding members stated their classrooms were not ready to accommodate 100% of the students with three feet minimum distance between student desks. Many commented that three feet would never be able to be accommodated with the class sizes. About half of the respondents stated that their lessons were not ready for the change from hybrid plans to 100% in-person. It's your job to set policy, and I hope you'll take these facts into consideration when doing so. Your employees have been in the trenches with students from day one, and students have been.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay. Let's see. Our next card is from Julian Papa. I don't believe he was in the queue. I'm taking a look. No. And then the comment card after that would be from Stephanie Mora, who is not in the queue. Just going to have a quick peek now through to the people that we missed to see if they have signed on since we called their name before, but I am not seeing any of them. So, President Yelsey, there are no more speakers in the queue.
So we will now move to item 7A, approved transition of secondary schools, grades seven through 12, to full-day in-person instruction, four days per week with distance learning, one day per week, beginning the week of April 26, 2021. Superintendent Lee Sung.
Okay. Thank you, President Yelsey. Please give me one moment to share my screen. Good evening, President Yelsey, member of the board, our guests, and members on Zoom. I'm very pleased tonight to bring forth a recommendation that we transition our secondary schools to full-day in-person learning, grades seven through 12, four days a week, and one day remaining in distance learning. And I have Dr. Kurt Baumeister with me this evening, who will share in presenting information to you, leading up to our final recommendation and formal action. The agenda item appears as this, and it's very detailed in terms of what we're proposing, and that is full-day instruction. So we're basically increasing instruction to in-person for four days for students and remaining the one day of distance learning per week. And the start date that we are recommending is the week of April 26, and we'll provide a little more information rationale behind that in just a bit. So I keep bringing this slide back because I think it's important to keep this in mind as we make these decisions during this pandemic. And I shared this when we took action on elementary not too long ago, and I bring this back again, that we are balancing many very important values and principles as we're making these difficult decisions. Of course, it is the health and safety of our students, teachers, and staff. We absolutely are concerned about the social-emotional needs of our students, making sure that the relationships are always important, quality teaching, et cetera. I also want to point out the second to the bottom, the bullet there, is our commitment to return to normalcy as much as possible without jeopardizing safety, and that's what I believe we're doing with this recommendation. Again, moving one step closer to normalcy, but also taking into consideration safety factors as well. Again, I want to bring this slide back, which I hope is very familiar, maybe etched in your mind in terms of what we have been doing throughout this year. And again, we started this school year in distance learning. We moved to Level 2 for our elementary the end of September, and we moved to Level 2 for secondary in early November. And now we're at the point where we're moving even closer to Level 1, and it's not quite at Level 1, 100% in-person, five days a week, but it is at four days a week with one day of distance learning. And again, we'll provide some of the rationale behind that recommendation. I'd like to start with, you know, again, the key question. I always like to talk about the why in all of our decisions, and I want to start with the fact that we have committed from the very beginning that our goal was to get our students back in person as much as possible. And again, this is a recommendation, this is the commitment of the board, commitment myself and staff to get our students back in person as much as possible. We know that we have done our best in this learning, but it has its limitations. It has its limitations, and very proud of the work our staff has been doing in that area. But if we can get our kids back in person, that is our first objective. And again, why now? And I've sent some messages out to our school community on this, and as we know, our COVID rates have consistently declined, and we're now in the orange tier, and we are knocking on the door of the yellow tier. We also had a significant update to the California Department of Public Health guidance, specifically in the area of distancing between students in the classroom, which had always been our primary obstacle to get more kids to be in-person in-class at one time. And now we have flexibility within the guidance as long as we don't go below three feet, and that was significant in leading to this decision, this recommendation, tonight. I also want to state that, yes, vaccines have become very readily available for our educators, and those that have wanted to get the vaccination have been able to do so. We've been assisting our employees who have had difficulty getting appointments, and the number of staff who have indicated they needed assistance has absolutely dwindled. And that's not only a phenomenon here in our Newport Mesa School District, but similar to what I heard in other districts throughout Orange County. And that's great news that the vaccine is available, and it's also great news that it's being expanded to more and more people, soon to be everybody 16 years and older. So the time is right. The time is right for us to make this recommendation. And again, when will this begin? It's the week of April 26. And the reason why we phrase it that way, of the week of April 26, is because we have some schools that will start the week on distance learning on Monday, which means that they will start in-person in this full-day model on Tuesday. But some schools will start on Monday, so that's why we phrased it as the week of April 26. Okay? And I just want to clarify that when we talk about secondary schools, we're talking about all of our secondary schools, middle schools and high schools, with the exception of the cloud campus, of course, because that is our virtual learning school, as well as Back Bay Monovista High School, who have already been serving their students full-day. Next is, again, the health guideline. Next is, again, the health guidelines that we follow. This is the guidelines from the state, was issued on January 14 and then updated as recent as March 20, 21, which they amended the distance between students in the classroom. So this is our guiding document in terms of the guidelines that we follow. And here are some of the safety measures that we have put into place. Face coverings are still required and a very, very important part of our safety plans. We continue to do the daily passive wellness checks. And there's the maximizing space in the classrooms between our seats and desks. And again, no less than three feet per the guidance. Many of these things are standard routines that we have already established, moving to Level 2. I do want to point out a couple of other things on here that we have increased our ventilation and filtration standards in the classroom. And we have also purchased a HEPA air cleaner in all of our classrooms. So, you know, these are measures that we've taken. We've been very successful in terms of being able to keep our students and staff safe. What we have seen, just like many other school districts, and they implement these measures, the transmission of COVID at our school sites is almost nonexistent. And that is the research and the data that's been coming out, which is causing the CDC and the California Department of Public Health to amend these standards is because they're realizing that school is a safe place for our students and our staff. Okay, at this time, I'd like to ask Dr. Baumeister to come forward. He has been working very closely, along with Mr. John Drake, with our principals and our directors in various departments in the district, working very hard to make sure that we can implement this plan. So I've asked him to share some information on these next additional questions. Dr. Baumeister.
Thank you, Superintendent Lee Sung. And you'll advance the slides for me as we go?
I will advance the slides.
Thank you. So after we got direction to look at a transition in secondary to full-day in-person instruction, I started meeting with the principals, first of all, for the discussion of, is it feasible? The next part of our discussion is, what would be the best schedule to meet the needs of our students and teachers? And then finally, the discussions we've really been having in the last few days is what is the process that we need to have to get the needed resources to our sites to complete this transition? So what is the schedule? As superintendent Lee Sung said, we're going to maintain our current hybrid Level 2 schedule. Our cohorts A and B will be combined and the expectation is that they will be in-person four days a week. Distance learning will continue one day a week. Teamical's distance learning day is Wednesday. Early Colleges is Friday, because they don't have college classes that day. And our other campuses, their distance learning day will be Monday. Our at-home learning cohort, known as Cohort C to a lot of people, will be maintained. So those students that are currently in Cohort C will remain in Cohort C for the rest of the year. So the next question is, why a five-day schedule? And we feel there are three compelling reasons why we want to maintain our hybrid schedule versus going to the five-day in-person schedule. The first being continuity or consistency of school program. So in talking with the principals, they did not believe that it was in the best interest of students or teachers to introduce a new schedule for the last six weeks of school. So they felt staying with a hybrid schedule would give the continuity and consistency for our students and teachers. The second reason is safety, and there's a couple of safety reasons. The first being, if we went to a full-five-day schedule instead of a distance learning day, that fifth day, all the teachers would see all of their students, all of their periods in one day. So on the four days, they only see three, three classes, they see about 90 kids. If we went to that full-five-day on that fifth day, they would see all of their classes. They would have 180 contacts in a day. The second safety reason, we believe, is with the hybrid schedule, a lot of our secondary schools, especially the juniors and the seniors, are able to leave after lunch. They don't have a class. And so they'll get their grab-and-go lunch and they will leave. And so it will reduce the number of students on campus. If we had a traditional five-day, many of those students would remain on campus and we would have many more students on campus to supervise. The third compelling reason, we believe, is teacher collaboration. And so on that distance learning day, they are able to meet for about 90 minutes. The teachers can meet together in departments and collaborate. On our four days as well, our full four in-person days, there's a half-hour of collaboration, department time, that our teachers are able to utilize as well. On the five-day schedule, they would lose that time. And so we know during these trying times with distance learning and all of the different things we're asking of our teachers, that extra collaboration time for them is important. So what are the challenges that we've been looking at? So some of the challenges, the first one obviously is space. And so we sent out a document to all of our principals with all of their rooms in the square footage and asked them to analyze, do we have space to fit all of the students, all of the desks in those rooms? So the next thing there, it says, is class size. And as you know, although we have very low class sizes across the board in our core classes, we average high, high twenties to mid twenties. Classes don't come even like that. You may have five classes of 26, but then you may have one Singleton AP class of 38. And so we have to house those 38 kids. So that was the, that was the analysis that our principals had to do. In those bigger classes, do we have classrooms to be able to fit in? So we also looked at, is there furniture that can possibly take out of our classrooms? Bookcases or things that aren't really needed that we can have that room? We looked at meal service, how we'll continue with that, transportation, adjustments to our operational plans and staffing needs. The one staffing need that has really kind of jumped out on us is the additional staffing that we will need at lunch and breaks with twice as many kids on campus. Because when they take their masks off, they have to be six feet apart. So that creates a bigger space to have to supervise. But one of the things that does help, as we said, at some of the secondary schools, our juniors and seniors and those without classes can leave, so that reduces that number. But at some of those other campuses, we've asked our principals to look at their classified staffing, to look at possible, possibly instructional aides, nutritional service people that are working part-time outside of their work hours. Maybe we can utilize them to supervise breaks and staff. Also, we're looking at avid tutors and we think one of the things that may be one of our saving graces are actually walk-on coaches. So our walk-on coaches that are already employed by the district, as you know, a lot of them are college students and they have extra time. And so we can utilize them to supervise breaks and lunches as well. Working with principals and district departments to address each challenge, it's been really kind of an accordion process. As we talk to the principals, we talk about what their needs are. Then I go back to the directors and we talk about what we can and can't do and go back and let the principals know. And I've got to tell you that to be able to do it as quickly as we did it, it would not have been possible if elementary hadn't already gone through that process. So being able to utilize the documents that Kathleen Leary, Kurt Surr and the elementary principals put together, it really helped us and sped things up for secondary. Because we already had a template where we could look at classroom setup, furniture removal and storage, supervision, cleaning, IT, operations, signage and PPE needed for extra layers of protection. The templates were already there, all we had to do was adjust it for secondary. So it really helped us do this work a lot faster. So will my student need to change teachers or schedules? We're still going through this analysis, but as of now, it doesn't look like there will be a lot of changes as far as students or for teachers. We believe there'll be really minimal changes as far as students changing classes or teachers having to move class. There are some, a few teachers, maybe, that that one big class that they have will have to move to another bigger room. But as of now, we've only found one or two of those, so it will be very minimal. And we don't look at, at having to add any other teachers to make any wholesale. Schedule changes for students, changes should be minimal. Bus transportation, our current rounds and safety protocols will continue. Pickup and drop-off times may be varied or adjusted a little bit. We found two schools where we're going to have to move their start time by five minutes. While that doesn't sound like much, as tight a schedule as our transportation is on, that can be huge for them to be able to make their schedule. So we will make, need to make a few changes, but again, we think they'll be very minimal and doable for our sites. I'm still working with transportation with Shelley on that. But we believe that the changes needed will be minimal to those schedules. Will lunch be provided? There'll be grab-and-go lunches. And again, as we said, for those kids that are leaving campus, it allows them to grab their lunch, leave campus and have less people on campus. But eating areas will also be primarily outdoors with social distancing. And that's another good thing about the grab-and-go lunches is you can sit on the ground. You can sit a lot of different places and eat it versus the hot meals. A lot of times, you know, you have to have forks and knives and plates and all those things. So it really does allow us to utilize more open spaces and spread out a little bit, which does give us that little need for supervision. But again, in some campuses, there will actually be fewer people on campus. So the bottom line is, after talking with the principals and looking at all of these different variables, we believe that this transition to full-day in-person instruction is doable and with a minimal amount of student and teacher disruption.
All right, thank you, Dr. Baumeister. And I just want to state, even though this isn't part of the action today, just to repeat something that has been announced previously, is will, will the fall be full-day, full-time for elementary and secondary? And the answer is yes, that we do intend to provide full-day instruction for all students TK-12 in our district. Okay, and the only exception is if we're somehow prohibited by the state or the county. Okay, so upon approval, I just want you to know with this action tonight, assuming an affirmative vote, that this allows us to continue to plan. As you heard, there's been already as much planning as we can do up to this point. But with this formal action, it allows us to go deeper in our planning. It allows us to work very closely with our teachers, continue working closely with our principals and directors, who all have very key operational duties and responsibilities to make our schools function. We will have formal meetings and negotiations with our employee unions and associations. And of course, as we get closer to the start of the opening on the 26, more and more details will be coming out, site-specific, from the principals to parents and students. So with that, we do recommend approval of the transition of secondary to full-day instruction. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Lee Sung. So the staff recommends approval of transition of secondary schools to full-day in-person, four days per week with distance learning, one day per week, beginning the week of April 26, 2021. I know trustees will have comments, but could I have a motion first to get it on the table?
Yes, I move to I move to approve transition of secondary schools, grades seven to 12, to full-day in-person instruction, four days per week with distance learning, one day per week, beginning the week of April 26, 2021.
Second.
Moved by trustee Barto, seconded by trustee Weygen. Okay, comments. This is trustee Barto.
Yes, I just had a couple of comments. I know there's a lot of feelings on all sides of this. And one of the questions I had was, you know, why, why the four-day versus the five-day? That was very helpful to understand the contact tracing piece. I think that's what a lot of the, the things that we've been facing is, if someone did indeed get COVID, a teenager, then we would have a much bigger pool and that would really affect all the learning of all the students who are back. Even if they were fortunate enough to not get sick, we would have to quarantine them. And with so few weeks left in the year, I'd like to see everyone be able to be back as much as possible. But my other question was Cohort C, do we know how many, what percentage of students are in that?
Dr. Baumeister, you want to provide the best information that you can?
It varies by school. We have three schools that are, that have between probably 25% to 15%. And then our other schools are fairly low.
Thank you, and that, that helps me do the math on how we can make those classrooms work. Thank you.
Is there, oh, I was, sorry, I was clarifying that question. Because my brain went to high school, I did not include the middle school. So I'm going, what other school? There's only one other school, but there's not, there's three. Thank you.
We get clarification on which school, where schools have 15 to 25% that are in Cohort C, please?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you, I couldn't hear the question.
Can I get clarification, please, on which schools or school are at 15 to 25% in Cohort C, please? What school is that?
Dr. Baumeister.
I had not heard that anywhere that high.
Our, our middle schools are all low. It's the, it's three high schools that are the 25 to 15 there. Coronado Mar, Newport Harbor and Costa Mesa.
I do have numbers for Corona Del Mar.
It, they are.
It's unofficial, so.
Well, do share.
Four, 438 at the high school and 84 at the middle school in Cohort C.
400?
Uh huh.
Yeah.
Are in Cohort C currently?
Okay, I'm going to go back to trustee Barto now.
Oh, and that actually was the bulk of my questions. I was wondering how that would impact those schools who had those large percentages of students in Cohort C. Thank you.
Trustee Weygen?
Yes, thank you for this presentation. I'm excited to get the kids back to more days as much as possible. I do have a question, because there are some constituents that would have liked five days as opposed to four. So I want to just clarify for them a couple more reasons why we chose the four days. And particularly, I wanted to understand the comments from principals. You know, they're on the site, they're understanding what can happen and what, when they can get back and, and the fastest way that they can get the most kids back possible. So if there's any more commentary about what the principals thought and, and how they came into this decision for four days, that would be great.
Right. Dr. Baumeister, you might as well.
Just stay up.
Stay up here, but, but let me, let me answer part of that. And then I, I know you've had the most direct contact with the principal, so you can absolutely add on. But, you know, we absolutely want to get our kids back as soon as possible. But the logistical challenges, the operational challenges are huge. And when we got into these very deep discussions about what it would take to get our kids back, this model that we're proposing tonight is the model that can get us back as quick as possible. And, and that was something that we had a vested interest to do. And I know desire of the board and our community is to get our students back as soon as possible. And again, like Dr. Baumeister said earlier, I thought what was really important was that to introduce a whole new schedule, something else would have created a whole nother set of operational challenges and issues, some that we would not have even identified in this conversation until we start to implement and everything. So this was, we believe, is the best plan. It maintains the continuity and it gets our kids back, gets our kids back and it doubles the time. And again, we're balancing everything and we're also keeping them safe and keeping that in mind. So again, back to the guiding principles. There's a lot of principles that are in play here. And we believe this is the best plan, looking at all of those, those principles. And Dr. Baumeister, you want to add anything else?
Sure, I, I think I said it in my prior comments, but I, I think one of the big reasons was, as Superintendent Lee Sung said, they felt it'd be a shock to the system if they all came back five days a week. One of the things they said is they, they thought the four-day is a good transition to bring people back full-time in the fall. And so I think that was as much a reason as anything. They, they, again, really believe that keeping that schedule the same would give a sense of continuity. I just thought, I think they felt that the five days a week was just too big of a change, that this was a good segue to next year coming back full-time. That seemed to be the sentiment.
Thank you, yes, I'm in favor of getting the kids back as soon as possible, so thank you for that.
In, in the spirit of continuity, as Mr. Lee Sung was saying, so I had not realized that 25% of CDM was not back. 430 students are a lot of students. So for continuity, how will those students be transitioning back to a full-day, four days a week? How will that?
I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't really catch that.
Well, for continuity, we, if we have, I mean, that's a lot of students. If there's 430 students at CDM, continuity for them looks really different than kids who have been in hybrid. What will, what will, how will we be transitioning them to a full day for, how, how will that work?
The cohort C students?
Mm-hmm.
They will remain in cohort C.
For the rest of the year?
Yes.
Oh, excellent. Okay. And then I know you had mentioned too for additional support for using some of the coaches, but I know currently, right now, in some of the campuses, breaks are really a bit chaotic, some of the lunchtimes. So is there a really specific schedule in place of every single area where children could be during breaks, during breaks a month will be supervised?
Absolutely. That's the work that they're doing is they're identifying the extra areas, the extra space that they'll need and the extra supervision that they'll need. So yeah, that's definitely a part of the analysis and a part of the plan.
Thank you.
Trustee Orsolo.
Hi, thank you for the, the great presentation. That was really helpful. For me, like most of us, we don't have a crystal ball. And so we know that the next six to eight weeks, as we've been told by the CDC, is extremely critical time. And for me, it's not a time to bring on a disruption like this for, for the kids that's going to not only socially, emotionally change up what they've been doing day to day, but also increase, you know, the opportunities for, for transmission. Because we know that high schoolers in particular, they transmit like adults. So many of us haven't gone back to our offices yet. So the idea of putting hundreds of kids back in basically their office, switching rooms repeatedly, doesn't sit well with me. But neither here nor there. The issue of vaccines, I'm curious because as of mid-April, the 16-plus crowd, which is a bit of the high schoolers, will be able to get the Pfizer vaccine. And then in the summer, those, I believe, 12 to, 12 to 15-year-olds will also be, be able to get vaccinated. Do we have a comprehensive plan for either promoting vaccine? Or have maybe a vaccination site at one of our locations? Just to make sure that we maximize that mitigation strategy to the, you know, the extent that people are comfortable, but at least to have that on the table because that's a key mitigation strategy. And lastly, testing. So when the CDC reduced the six feet down to three feet, in that same report, the part that gets overlooked by a lot of folks, they also suggested six feet can go down to three feet indoors when sufficient mitigation strategies are added, such as testing, testing, pooled testing, random testing. Do we have any strategy around testing and the idea that families can, I mean, it's going to, you're going to have to have them opt in. But, but at least many districts I know on the East Coast have already implemented this. I know San Diego is already working on it in a lot of locations. But it seems like we're very keen on lowering, you know, lowering distancing, you know, doing what we can around ventilation, these other strategies. But the mitigation ones like testing and inoculation are the things that are going to really help people. So if there's a way that we can do that. And for just, you know, zone specific, my high school that I represent in Estancia, they don't have a cohort C. So what we're asking is for all of the students to be back full time after the break. And for me, I can't in good conscience shove them all back into that building. But the other issue for everyone is also spring break is going to be, you know, spring break for people. So I'm curious if it's possible for us to consider an adjustment to waiting two weeks, like a full quarantine period after spring break rather than just one week? Because there's so many unknown factors right now. And as the student speaker, I forgot his name, the very first public speaker we had, as he acutely pointed out, in Michigan and also in New Jersey, where you're seeing the British variant be the dominant variant as it's coming to California, it is more highly transmissible. And so thinking about things like spring break very carefully might be very useful for us. So thank you so much.
Yeah, if I may, you brought up three very important points here. The first one in terms of vaccinations for kids. So I attend a meeting every Friday with the Orange County superintendents. And always in attendance is Dr. Chow from the Orange County Healthcare Agency, as well as the county Department of Education superintendent and staff. And we get updates. And last week, the bulk of the conversation is about exactly what you said, trustee Orsolo, is how do we prepare, begin to educate our parents and getting ready for the 16 and 17-year-olds? And hopefully soon, the, the younger children. And so that will be the big push. We're working very closely with Mary Graska, our Director of Health Services. She's actually preparing some information that I know is in draft form right now. And that will be the next big push is to educate our parents on the vaccination and so that they can decide whether they will have their children take the vaccine or not. So that is a very important part of our role. In terms of testing for both students as well as employees. First of all, I want to start with the fact that we do have a voluntary testing program here in the district for employees that has been going on for several months now and that will continue. We, at some point, very likely will be providing a testing program for students. There's a lot of companies and information coming out right now in terms of making testing more accessible. And that's great for everybody. And our risk manager, Jonathan Willby, Mary Gross has been keeping up with those products and services. It's still quite a logistical challenge and still a cost. But at some point, I know those things will be worked out and we will be providing that and using that as an option, not as anything mandatory, I want to make very clear, but as something that is an option for students and of course, with their parent consent. And then the third thing about spring break, you know, obviously, you know, we, we've been very concerned about holiday periods. And I do want to take this opportunity to really encourage everybody to continue. Let's not put our, bring our guard down in terms of maintaining the guidelines, the masks, limiting travel. And that's very important. But we talked about that very deeply, you know, when we were talking about a start date with our principals. I just want you all to know, you know, should we wait later? And you know what? Again, the challenge is there's pros and cons. We wait later, we lose instructional time. We know there's this urgency to get our kids back into instruction in person as much as possible. And, and that was very important. And, you know, if there's travel during spring break, we may not see the effects of it within two weeks. It may come in three weeks or four weeks. It may be, hopefully it will be minimal or nonexistent at all. I do know that looking at our dashboard in terms of positive cases here for both employees and students is very low, is very low. The last I looked, it was 13 in the overall district. And it may be even lower as of today because I didn't check it this morning. So anyways, we hope to keep that trend, but we did not feel that that was enough of a reason to delay the start into May because again, we want to get our kids back as soon as possible.
Oh, I, I did have a question, but I was, I think you answered it. I was just clarifying that just as we are not requiring adults to get vaccinated, we are not requiring children to get vaccinated. It's a voluntary thing.
That's correct.
I had a lot of questions from constituents that week.
And staff.
Yes. Any other? Trustee Crane?
You know, from, from the onset, we always had the commitment to pivot. This is why we had three levels, three different models. And this was based as we follow the behavior of the, the virus, COVID-19, especially as it relates to the safety guidelines that we've been, you know, dictated by the state. And if you think about the history from the fall to now, we have basically pivoted based on thoughtful deliberation with the consistent message that kids learn best in the classroom. Now, of course, as a board, I remember we went into distance learning for secondary because there was a spike. Our intent is to keep the kids safe. I do believe that this, given the time, the trends as far as the, the orange tier, the vaccination movement, the safety guidelines, the ventilation, the air purifiers in the classroom, the safety. You know, we, we've very much done much to secure a safe classroom. I do believe that we need to get the kids back into the classroom. However, my, my concern, and it's not necessarily actually a concern, I do urge and strongly encourage the site administrators to closely involve and engage our teachers, our support staff in solution-based plans in order to bring the kids back safely and so that the learning environment is constructive to learning. So that's my big thing is I would love, I would like to see a lot of feedback from the sites and cooperative and collaborative work with staff, teachers, et cetera. And that's, that's where I stand.
Right. Thank you, trustee Crane. I, I want to emphasize the point that you just made there at the end. We, we need to work closely with our site personnel, not just our principals. Our, our engagement obviously is with the, with the principals, but their work. And they are very collaborative leaders. They have built their own site structures. Sometimes they have site teams, their leadership teams, COVID, you know, reopening teams. We're, we're moving to level two. And that's a very important aspect because our direction here at the district can only go so far in terms of providing the guidance and the parameters. And they're the ones who take it to that very detailed level for full implementation. And so I want to assure you that that work is important and our, our leaders definitely feel that's important.
Yeah, and, and just to follow up a bit, I received a lot of input from all the stakeholders, from teachers, administrators, students. I spoke to a senior today who was extremely excited at the prospect of going back to school four days a week because, as she said, I would love to get back to some sort of normalcy and hang out with my senior class. So when we speak about the social, emotional, it's important. And of course, I, I have complete faith in our, in our professionals, our teachers, that they will do the best they can as well academically.
Trustee Latoye.
Thank you. I'd like to thank you, Dr. Baumeister, for acknowledging the trailblazing work that the elementary campuses have made. They've done this twice. They, they, they started the, the plans to go back to the original hybrid model. They started the plans to go back full time. They shared their learning always with the high schools, what worked and what didn't work. And I think the model, the fact that the model was every principal had a team on site and it was not an exclusive team, it was a very inclusive team. If you want to be on this team, come join me. And they planned together to make it the best for the kids. And the logistics are a challenge. I swear, we could probably run John Wayne Airport now if we had to because our teams have worked so hard. And I also would like to acknowledge teams that aren't listed. We listed Transportation and Nutrition Services, but we also have our special ed teams that have been working double and triple overtime. And they have been in school all day, every day. So they are models for the secondary program. And we also have our health program, our health services and our mental health services for, for supplying everything. And myriads of departments in maintenance and facilities that we don't even think about because the continual delivery of PPE, which is there. I was very pleased to see that should a teacher want Plexiglas, it's available for them. Should they want extra PPE for themselves, it's available. It's annoying, but it's available. And it, we have learned so much that I never, ever would have wanted to have to ever learn. But boy, we've got it. And our teachers are just, they're exhausted. So I hope everybody relaxes over spring break, turns off your phone if you can do it. It's hard. And takes a breather because I think the benefits of returning, the smiles on the kids' faces and the, the immediate feedback from, as a teacher, the feedback from a child or the gleam in their eye when the light bulb goes on, it's worth it all. So I thank you for all the hard work. And teachers, I thank you for the hard work that's coming.
Thank you, Dr. Baumeister. Are there any other questions from trustees? Are we good? I just wanted to make a few comments. I think we all realize COVID exists. It hasn't gone away. We're not taking this action because we think there's no COVID. We know that's happening. There's always risk in anything we do. And I think we just have to decide what level of risk we're willing to go with and work on the safety protocols to make sure we're minimizing any risk we have. I feel very confident that we've taken all the safety measures that we need at this point. And you, you talk about the risk of COVID. And as I've said, I think every meeting we have, the risk of mental health and social and emotional issues to me is, is just as strong. And I think for those reasons, we definitely need to get our kids back sooner rather than later. We've said this all along, but we've all heard it. We've heard it from kids, we've heard it from their parents. And we've seen some of the mental health questions that have come up through the district. So we know the number of people who have contacted some of our sites. Which reminds me, I've, in talking to some of the parents out there, we have such a robust mental health, mental services program. They are not aware of it all. So I think we have to connect more of our community with what the resources are we have because I always stand up and say, it's amazing what we offer, the resources we have, and they don't know. And even, you know, we can tell them to go on the website, but I think somehow we need to do a better job of communicating what those are. I also believe that all the work that's been done in elementary has taught us a lot. And I know one of the teachers who, who gave a comment said that the classrooms are not ready to accommodate three feet distancing. Well, that's something at the elementary schools. I think when we first decided that we wanted to go back, the teachers there were concerned as well because they thought, I have to figure this out myself. And the teachers don't have to figure it out themselves. They have their administration at each of the schools who is totally on top of this and will work with each of them individually to make sure they have what they need in their classrooms, whether it's removing furniture, switching to a different classroom. They all will be in touch with their, with their teachers on campus. And I see both Dr. Baumeister and Superintendent Lee Sung shaking their heads that yes, they are doing that. And I have full confidence that they will continue to do that. But to me, the, the ideal place for these students is in the classroom. I think we need to have them at school. It's, it's just imperative for them to get back to as much normalcy. And this is our new normal. Yes, we will still do contact tracing. And there may be students who are out on quarantine and we work with that. But I think we've got that system down now. We know how to do that. And I, I think we, personally, I really feel strongly, we need to take this leap. So if there's no further comments, we have a motion and a second. Mrs. Amescola, would you call the roll?
Trustee Yelsey?
Yes.
Trustee Barto?
Yes.
Trustee Latoye?
Yes.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
Trustee Crane?
Yes.
Trustee Orsolu?
No.
Trustee Weygen?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries 6-1. So we have a lot of work to do. And we, staff, principals, everyone, teachers will need to start working. And please, everyone be careful over the break so that we can come back strong and healthy and not start a, a new spread. Just be careful, families. We really appreciate your participation in this. And we're looking forward to seeing the smiles on the kids' faces when they return. So thank you for that. We'll now move to item 7B, approved continuation of cloud campus grades TK through 12 for the 2021, 2022 school year. We have eight speakers on this. So Mrs. Fish, would you like to call, start calling people up?
Thank you, President Yelsey. Our first speaker, comment card is from Kevin Thompson, who is actually still not in the queue. His name was on earlier. The second comment card is The second comment card is from Shalini Beach. Who is also not in the queue. So we will move to Owen Fitzsimmons. You have two minutes. I'm sorry, I'm getting a pop-up that says the allowed-to-talk feature is not available because Mr. Fitzsimmons is using an older version of Zoom. So I'm, I'm not able to enable him to speak. The next comment card is from Julie Austin-Bine. Julie, you have two minutes. Please unmute yourself, state your name for the meeting record, and begin speaking.
Hello, this is so odd. Am I, am I going through?
Yes, you are.
Okay, thank you. I missed, I also had a comment in for secondary, but I guess I missed that portion. So I guess I'm just here to express that we love cloud. We're having a great experience, even in all of the challenges that you might face with, you know, internet or not being in the classroom. One thing that I'm finding is really beneficial is that like the kids or the teachers are able to almost gear learning to where the kids are. I think, I don't know if this is like an actual thing within the programs, but it just seems a little bit easier to gear it towards the individual child. And I really see my daughter excelling in that. And so I'm really hoping that it continues. I am a parent that will more than likely not have my children attend public school if the COVID vaccine is not, you know, a mandatory vaccine to attend or, you know, all these other things that we go into. As you, as we've said, the science changes consistently. But even looking at alternatives for my older daughter, based on some of the outcomes of these meetings and procedures or updates and upgrades that are going on at the schools or not going on at the schools. You know, so cloud is an amazing option. So thank you for having it because we definitely need an all-virtual option for right now and I think going forward. So thank you for your time.
Okay, our next speaker is Joe Mardosian. I do not see Joe in the list. Let's move on to the next is Faith Norrie. Who is also not on the list. The speaker, the next comment card is from Cindy Maher. You have two minutes to speak. Please state your name for the meeting record and begin speaking.
My name is Cindy Maher, and I'm a parent of a freshman and junior at CDM. The full-time, at-home, livestream cohort, known as Cohort C, at our high schools swelled and has been vital for high school students to be connected to their unique high school courses and extracurriculars. The Cloud Campus, as it stands, does not meet many high school students' academic, physical, and emotional needs. As is why Cohort C exists and has a much larger high school participation than the Cloud Campus. The Cloud Campus model needs to be improved to be relevant to high-achieving high school students. And students should be connected through their homeschool for the 2021-22 school year. Irvine Unified School District has been doing this with their high school academic models. Their Virtual Academy students are able to participate in sport programs, events, classes, and graduate with their peers at their homeschool. Those students work with their homeschool counselors on the sequence and enrollment of courses, along with college planning. Irvine Virtual Academy did not disconnect high school students from their homeschool like the Cloud Campus and recognized high-achieving students' needs. Irvine Virtual School Course offerings are robust and include many AP courses, visual and performing arts, world languages, career and technical education, and others. I spoke with one of Irvine Board Trustees on their planning for next year, and they are highly considering continuing not disconnecting high school students from their homeschool for the 21-22 school year. Their Virtual Academy only needs five students enrolled from each high school in order to operate classes. I am hoping Newport Mesa's leaders will not look at a one-size-fits-all approach when making important decisions and recognize that high school needs are much different than elementary. High school students are heading into college, and many of our high schools compete with private schools and other neighboring districts to go, to get into college. If the Cloud Campus will not improve course offerings and connect students to their homeschool, then NMUSD should continue the at-home livestream model in the high schools for the 21-22 school year if there is a public health concern. Students should be able to return to their homeschool every quarter or semester. Thank you for your consideration, and I hope to hear some promising news soon. Have a wonderful evening.
Thank you. Okay, our next comment card is from Conrad Gilbert. And then after that, we'll try to go back to Owen. Actually, Conrad's not in the list, so. Owen, you have three minutes. You may go ahead and unmute yourself and go ahead and speak.
Hello, my name is Owen Fitzsimmons, and I am a seventh grader at Cloud Campus. And I just wanted to let you know how much I appreciated this school year. My teachers are really good, and I like that I could directly reach out to them through email or office hours. And I feel like I'm learning a lot. And want to say thank you for creating this school in our district. And I hope you vote to keep Cloud Campus because it is important to have a virtual school in our district. And I want to attend next year. Also, my sister is at gymnastics right now, but she asked to read, asked me to read this letter to you. She's in fifth grade. Please vote to keep Cloud Campus around for a long time. I love my teachers, and I like how everything is set up on my Chromebook for me to use. Since I have dyslexia, I can use text to talk on my Chromebook instead of leaving my classroom to have things read to me. Cloud Campus works so much better for me. At Cloud Campus, I have the best grades I've ever gotten, and I'm so excited to keep going to school, school here next year. Thank you.
Thank you. President Yelsey, there are no more speakers in the queue.
That was, that was, okay. Thank you very much. And I know some of us without earphones could not hear well. But we did receive a comment from Owen's mother explaining their experience at the Cloud Campus. So I think he was just confirming what she said, that he really was very pleased with being at the Cloud Campus. Okay, 7B, approved continuation of Cloud Campus grades TK through 12 for the 2021-2022 school year. Do I have a motion?
I move that we approve continuation of Cloud Campus grades TK to 12 for the 2021-2022 school.
Second.
Moved by Trustee Crane, seconded by Trustee Matoye. Comments?
Will we have any kind of presentation or?
There's a presentation.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Superintendent Lee Sung.
I'm moving ahead of myself.
Okay. Again, this is another very important item that we are bringing forth for your consideration. Joining me in this presentation is Principal Shaka from the Cloud Campus.
Oh, but he is here.
Who is part of our panel. So Dr. Shaka, why don't you make sure your camera is on now?
Virtually, of course.
Okay, there you are, Dr. Shaka. Okay, so the item is to approve the continuation of Cloud Campus for TK 12 for one school year, one additional school year for 21-22. And I want to start with just a bit of a background on Cloud Campus. It doesn't have a long history, but boy, it sure was exciting. Starting first of all with the board's approval on June 23rd to provide parents a choice, a virtual option choice for their elementary, middle, or high school student. And that was a very important decision. It was something that emerged very quickly through some of our advisory groups, through input from our parents, that we're going to need to provide that. And this was something that the board acted on right away because we needed to act upon it right away. As of June 23rd, once we got the official go-ahead, there was some amazing people here in the district, starting with Jennifer Mishney from our Educational Technology Department, Austin Bobovic, RT Department, a whole bunch of people working on this very, very quickly. And we made a great decision to appoint Dr. Shaka as the principal, who was a one-person shop for quite a while there, until we could hire some additional staff, assistant principal, counselor, and of course, giving him the opportunity to build his teaching and classified support staff. And literally built the school within weeks during the summer of 2020. And it is amazing to think about what goes into building a school that didn't exist, and particularly in this virtual environment. From the technology, both software and hardware, the curriculum, building a master schedule from scratch, building a budget, and of course, training everybody. And I can go on and on. And Dr. Shaka probably is still repeating those things in his sleep every evening. But incredible and amazing feat that they accomplished. And we have been able to serve over 1,700 Newport Mesa students in the Cloud Campus from TK to 12. And so we're very proud of this accomplishment. But when we made this decision, it was for the school year. So what we're bringing forth to you tonight is to ask you for your support to continue the Cloud Campus for one more year into 2021-22. And I want to add that the timing of this is very critical because we need to be able to request to our current students and their parents whether they want to continue in the Cloud next year. So until we get this formal action, we can't ask that, that key question. And then equally important is all of our elementary schools, middle schools, and high schools in the district need to know which students intend to come back because they're currently building their master schedule right now. And they want to be able to ask these students, what are your course, courses and selections and elective choices, et cetera, that they need to be able to build the master schedule? So there has been a lot of discussion with Dr. Shaka, with all of our principals in the district, and again, key departments involved in those discussions. So before we go any further, I do want to give Dr. Shaka an opportunity to share about the Cloud Campus. Dr. Shaka.
Well, good evening, President Yelsey, members of the board, Superintendent Lee Sung, executive cabinet members, all of the outstanding staff members I know are joining us today, and all of the amazing community members here as well. My name is Mike Shaka, and I've had the honor of serving as Cloud Campus principal for the last eight months. And I just wanted to share a little bit about where we've been, where we are, and where we're headed as Cloud Campus. The first thing that I'd like to talk about, the first thing that I'd like to talk about is staff. We simply could not do it without the outstanding staff that we had. And I think I mentioned a number of months ago that when you put amazing teachers in front of kids and give them the ability to adjust and grow, great things happen. And that's exactly what's happened in Cloud Campus. I wanted to talk to you about what's most important to us right now, and that's this idea of establishing identity and connectedness through a virtual environment. It can be a challenge. As we've talked about earlier during this, during this meeting, there are certainly challenges to the virtual environment and everything that comes along with it. But Cloud Campus has really prioritized that and done everything possible to connect kids to our school. Currently, over the last eight months, we've been able to establish 13 clubs available to TK through 12th grade students. You can see some of the pictures of our cooking club, students making grilled cheese sandwich and soup, fruit pies, you name it. We've got 13 different clubs to give students experiences to try to connect them. We've got 22 electives and 11 AP classes. I think this is really important to highlight. We had a, we had a speaker comment that mentioned some concerns regarding lack of program at Cloud. This was certainly a reality as we started our, our school year. But as has been an identifying characteristic of a cloud, we've adapted, grown, and expanded. And the comparison to another, another virtual school within our county, I think, is very comparable at this point in time. We were shared the course offerings with the other, the other district's course offerings. And Cloud Campus currently has a very comparable list, again, with 22 different electives, 11 AP classes, a variety of opportunities extracurricular as well. Cloud Campus has, has really grown a lot in that area. At the elementary, some of the questions that we had were how is virtual learning going to translate to elementary? And what we've done is built an enormous amount of connectedness with elementary through things like Weekly Flag Deck. I will, I will shamelessly send all of you the link to this week's Friday Flag Deck so you can see a little bit of the excitement that goes on. But it's really a lot of fun and another way for students to connect. Community partnerships. We've got numerous community partnerships. One that pops to mind is a partnership with a professional soccer team where the professional players meet with our students over Zoom, take them through skills. The students record themselves doing skills, send it in and get merit badges. And then you can see our lovely Cloud Campus model as one of our images for our Cloud Campus spiritware. Again, these small things make a big difference. Connecting students to identity and making them feel like they're a part of something beyond just a Zoom screen. They're, they're a Cloud Campus phoenix, and I think that's been a cornerstone of where we are. Go to the next slide. Moving forward, again, I think the defining characteristic is understanding how we continue to grow. We've learned a lot and have, have expanded immensely over the last eight months. But we are certainly not stagnant, and we are certainly not under the impression that Cloud Campus has arrived. Cloud Campus will continue to make adjustments. And again, going back to some of the concerns brought forward by, by some of the comments, we're already moving in a direction to continue to improve and expand. Some examples of that are we've created a double-strand English pathway opportunity. Some students prefer a more asynchronous experience with limited synchronous. Other students want a four-to-five-day synchronous opportunity. At Cloud, kids can choose, have either one that fits their learning style best. This was created by the teachers based off of a perceived need and a response to that need. We're also in the process of forming what we're calling the Improvement Council. And we formed a committee of staff. We are currently eliciting interest from both students and parents that are going to sit on this panel, that are going to talk about ways we can continue to better serve our students as we move forward. Again, that model of continuous growth. I think access to specialty programs at home sites is critical. This is something that was aspirational at the start of the year, that after working with our site principals, all of our site secondary principals certainly expressed a desire to allow students to connect to their home sites as much as possible. So what this means is moving forward, if Cloud Campus is approved, is that students will have the opportunity to take specialty classes, such as zero-period marching band, at their homeschool, schedule permitting. Now, it's a big puzzle with our different secondary schools on different, different schedules. So it's not a guarantee they will be able to take every specialty class at their homeschool. But there's a desire to tap into some of those unique programs that home sites offer. Currently, Cloud Campus students this year will have the option to graduate either from Cloud Campus in a virtual ceremony, or they have the option to participate in the live ceremonies at each of their homeschool. So again, this idea of options to make sure that we accommodate students in every way possible. We'll be partnering with ROP. We started the partnership this year. And expanding that partnership is again, another critical, a critical move for Cloud Campus in order to give these students as many opportunities as possible. If we can go to the next slide. This is our staff photo. We had every staff member create a Bitmoji. This year, I learned what a Bitmoji was and how to create one. And to me, this is a really powerful image because it encapsulates the amount of adult power that goes into serving our students. This is our Cloud Campus staff. And again, if there's one defining characteristics to them, it's been the agility to adapt and improve as we've moved over time. That's exactly what we'll get if we improve Cloud Campus moving forward, is continued growth and improvement to continue serving our students in a very, very unique environment. Thank you.
When Dr. Shaka first showed this to me, it was a little bit like, where's Waldo? And I found him. He's there, right there in the front. What a great picture of the staff. So anyways, let me just wrap up with a couple of other key points here related to the Cloud. One of the things that's very important that I want to point out is the Cloud and this online option does serve a very important purpose, not only because we want to give parents the choice, but it also meets the state requirement that we provide this online option to students in our district. And then the other thing is that, and we heard this, we heard this loud and clear at the study session with our principals about a month or so ago, when they were talking about how they could truly focus on instruction with their kids that were there in person and how beneficial that was. And the fact that the Cloud Campus is functioning as its own school and we can protect that time of in-person learning for our regular comprehensive elementary and middle and high schools is an important point that I wanted to make. And you know, for those students who thrive in this environment or those students and their parents who feel that they are not ready to go back to in-person instruction, this is a great, wonderful option that we want to be able to continue for them moving into the next school year. And the recommendation tonight is that we continue the Cloud Campus for the 2021, 22 school year for all TK to 12th grade. We are also stating that parents need to commit to a full trimester or semester, and that transfers either to or from the Cloud, between Cloud and their homeschool, would take place at the end of each trimester or semester. So we've given them that opportunity. And this is so important because it really avoids the disruption and the instability that creates when students move in and out of programs. So we want parents to commit, but at the semester and the trimesters that we would support transfers at that time.
Thank you, Superintendent Li Sung, Dr. Shaka. Great presentation. I know we have some comments. Who would like to start? Trustee Bartel.
I have three questions. One, can you break, this is for Dr. Shaka, you break down the split between elementary and high school for the Cloud Campus?
Enrollment?
Enrollment.
Absolutely. Currently, we have 1,207 students TK through 12 and approximately 550 students in the secondary. That's roughly split between middle and high school. So I don't have the exact numbers in front of me, but I'm going to ballpark around 220 in middle school and the additional students in the high school.
Thank you. And then my next question is, do you have an idea of the number of students? I know we don't have a formal intent yet, but an idea of the number of students you think would continue based on informal surveys?
Yeah, we sent out a survey a number of weeks ago to try to gather very informal, non-commitment information. And what we saw based off the survey respondents, which was approximately 1,000 of our students, Cloud Campus TK through 12, is 23% of those respondents said they would come back to Cloud Campus, they were planning to come back to Cloud Campus next year. And then in the middle of that survey was about 40% that were unsure.
And then we probably don't have this information now, and it will change next year. But I was curious as to the average cost per pupil for Cloud Campus. I know we have a number that we have available to offer per student. So I was just wondering how that compared to a normal, one of our normal sites?
I could tell, I don't have the cost information in front of me. I'm sorry.
That's fine. I was saying for future because I'm sure it will change going forward, but I'd love to know what that breaks out like.
Trustee Matway.
Yes. Dr. Shaka, I know you're going to do a more complete survey, a more detailed survey, an official survey rather than, would you, do you have a guesstimation of when that will take place? And when we will get a, when you will have the answers you need in order to plan your master schedule for next year?
We have a survey ready to go out that we are eager to send out as soon as possible.
Second, ooh, I had three, and I just lost one of them. So that's great for you, Mr. Trustee Crane. Should we continue? We are deciding just on next year right now, I know. Should we continue beyond this year? Since this is a KTK 12, do they need WASC accreditation for the high school portion of it?
I can speak to that. We went through the preliminary informal WASC accreditation this year to give us permission to move forward this year with accreditation. It will be a more comprehensive process if we continue, but we are all set for this year.
But let me bring it up. Yeah, no, thank you. I appreciate that. And when I remember what my third question was, I'll raise my hand again.
Trustee or Solo, do you have, no comment?
Not yet.
Trustee Crane.
Yeah, so you mentioned the specialty programs, and then you use an example of zero-period marching band. Would that also apply to athletics if a student decided to, let's say, join the tennis team or football, for that matter, depending on how the schedule works?
Currently, athletics would not be an option based off CIF rules. So CIF mandates that a student must be enrolled in 50% or more of their classes at their homeschool in order to be eligible. So unless there was some situation where that was the case, CIF would not allow it.
And then, whoops. The other question is, as far as staffing, because the numbers aren't, obviously, we don't have hold of the numbers and all that, but is it the same faculty that will be returning? Or will there be an open process of interview?
Yeah, there will be an open process for interviewing. So anyone who chooses to will be able to apply for the positions, and we'll go through a traditional hiring process.
But the ones that go back then?
Then I have one final question. So if I were a parent that's intending to go to send my child to Cloud Campus, when is the, and this is all, of course, in the planning stage, but the final commitment? Because obviously, some parents may not be willing to make the commitment at this point, despite the survey that's going to go out, things change, who knows? And so is there a drop dead date that a family can enroll in Cloud Campus by August or July? Or do you have any ideas of where you're heading in that sense?
In the Zoom world and us here in reality. So, but we've talked about that. And the first, the next step, as Dr. Shaka said, is an intent to participate survey, which is going to ask our parents to basically indicate which program they want to do, whether they want to stay at the Cloud or return to their homesite. That's very important. But something we did similar to last year is at some point, we will do a confirmation. We will do a confirmation, okay? And, but we do want our parents to take this intent to participate request very seriously, okay? Because that's, we're going to be doing a lot of planning based on that. But we will always have some confirmation as we get closer to the beginning of the school year.
That's great. Thank you.
Trustee Anderson.
Thank you. I was wondering, part of the reason why I was surprised that we were talking about this is because when it had been approached before, several of us had asked for the financial implications and the feasibility of continuing this school. I have not received any financial information. So where, where are the financial breakdowns as to cost analysis of this being feasible for next year?
I don't have the financial analysis prepared for this meeting. We can provide that to the trustees at a later time. However, I do know that if this is a priority of the board, that we'll make sure that the funding is there. As we all know, there's additional funding provided to school districts due to COVID. Any additional expenses that we incur related to the Cloud Campus for this purpose, those funds could be used.
Yep. Part of the reason why, I know a few of us had asked about the financial breakdown is to see where that money would be coming. So if 80% would be general fund and 20% would be COVID special funds or what that number looks like, I'm disappointed. I realize time is of the essence, but I would like to have this be at a regularly scheduled board meeting when we have all of that financial information. I don't think that we're prepared at this time. Several of us have asked for additional information, and we have not received it, and we're not getting it today. My second question is, why is the district choosing to move forward and rushing this instead of presenting it at the regular board meeting in two weeks and not including the decision-making of the parents, the teachers, the community, and the whole board? So one of the things that I would like to see is a robust teacher survey. How many of those teachers want to return next year? My understanding was, there was just a basic question as to parents, if they want to stay, if they want to return to their homeschool, or if they're undecided. 79% said that they were not, 79% said they were undecided or wanted to return to their homeschool. So only 21% said they want to stay at Cloud. I'm not sure that we are ready to make a decision today. So my understanding was, according to the last time we heard about this issue, it said, "We plan to send out a second survey the week prior to spring break." That's now. I don't know if that survey has gone out. In my opinion, I think we should get the intent to participate and then make a decision. Because to me, it's not that we make a decision and then ask people to participate. If we are putting something out in front of something when we haven't heard from the parents, I don't think that's prudent financially. It says, "Survey two will ask our parents to commit to either Cloud Campus or return home to their homeschool." So my question is, why are we rushing and not having this on April 27th? I'm not hearing why.
I've stated before that we need to move forward with this decision so that all of our schools can do their planning and to provide opportunities for students to select their courses. When we discuss this with principals, this is a very timely issue, and it's holding up the entire district. It's very important. I think the other part is that it really is up to this board to determine whether we want to provide a parental choice virtual option, 100% virtual learning option to our parents. And that's really what this is about. That we, you know, if we want to do it, then that's what this consideration is. Related to the undecided folks on the survey, like Dr. Shaka said, this was done very early. This was very preliminary. And this was even before we had announced that we were going to full day in both elementary and secondary. That could be one of the reasons why they're undecided. And so now with that information and our commitment that we will be full day, full-time in the fall, I believe a lot of the undecided will make that decision. So for a lot of reasons, we need to move this forward. And then the other comment you made was about teachers not knowing. And so working very closely with human resources, teachers who want to return back to a comprehensive site have the ability to do that. And that's something that Leon Olsson and our associations have talked very openly about. And if they want to remain at the Cloud Campus, they can apply and go through a process, and we would select those teachers who want to be at the Cloud. And that's very important. So anyways, but the bottom line is that we do need to move forward, make a decision whether the Cloud will exist, and that will help us with our planning.
Well, I appreciate what you said about providing a virtual option. I think that that is very important. I think for many of us who consider technology an integral part of everyday classroom use, I would have liked to see that pre-COVID. I think post-COVID, I would like to see more integration rather than segregating a small amount of kids that could be less than 200 students to a specialty school. One of the things that I am also wondering is, so do we have a plan in place if 90% of those students leave at the first trimester? So if we're offering the option for fall, for students to leave at the first trimester or first semester, what is our plan? We will have wasted a lot of money, a lot of time and energy. I haven't heard anything as to what it could look like if all those students decide, if there's a vaccine for students, if there are more teachers decide to get vaccinated, if that school, you know, October 15th is no longer viable because all the students pull out. Do we have a plan in place for that? And is that financially prudent?
So first of all, in looking at Dr. Shaka's draft survey that he's prepared, there are additional questions in there that will seek to gather some data in terms of what is the motivation of parents choosing to stay at the Cloud? And questions just like that. You know, if there's a vaccine, would you be more apt to return back to the homesite? So there's actually several questions added to the survey so that we can at least have some indication if there will be a lot of parents potentially wanting to go back to homesite at the trimester or semester. So that will help us make that decision. But if we do have a number of students that need to switch, just like we do at any point, is we will look at the numbers, we'll look at our staffing, and we'll make adjustments accordingly, which is why I think it's so important that we do it at certain times of the year so that we can prepare and plan for that. And obviously, before we get to the trimester, the plan would be to survey the parents again and find out if any of them intend to switch so that we have time to plan and make those adjustments. Hopefully, the movement isn't as large as what you described because we certainly want to have stability. But if that's the case, and that's our commitment, we'll make the adjustments that we need to.
And then for the current numbers, it looks like there are only, based on this preliminary first survey, there are only 86 students from 7th to 12th grade who have said that they want to stay. Are you anticipating that you would be approving or recommending that we go forward again with Florida Virtual School, which was $211,000?
I have not engaged in any detailed conversation in terms of whether we're going to continue Florida Virtual or not. Again, with the approval to continue Cloud, those are the things that we would look at very deeply and see, is there a need to change? Because like Dr. Shaka said, that their commitment is to continue to improve the Cloud. And that would be one area I think we would want to hear from them and their teachers.
Because if we did move forward, that would be the Cloud. Secondary students would have an additional $2,500 per student. And I think that is quite inequitable, and I think that we can figure out a better plan. I am wondering if there is a way that we can, I would like to make a substitutionary motion that after we get the results of Survey Two that have the intent to participate, that the parents ask, answer robust questions, and we have more information as to the financial implications. So we know the finances, and we know what the parents... the financial implications. So we know the finances, and we know what the parent community wants, then we make a decision. So I would like to make a substitutionary motion to, to wait today, to hold off today on making a decision, and have this brought forward on April 27th at a regular board meeting.
Would anyone want to second that?
I have a question. Can we amend our motion to possibly say until we get further, I mean, that's...
Would that mean I would have to change my motion? I was the one who moved...
Yes, but do, do you want to change your motion?
Or did you move it?
No, no.
You moved it. No, I don't. I just wanted to ask.
It's a point of order.
Point of order.
No, the process.
And it was Mrs. Crane, Trustee Crane, that made the motion.
No, I was just curious as to, can a motion be amended to basically include a subset?
Which would be what?
Basically, it would, it would say, oh, approved continuation of cloud campus grades TK through 12 for the 2021-22 school, until we hear back from a parent survey, for example. I'm not saying I'm...
Or maybe pending sufficient enrollment?
I'm just asking.
I think the reason that we, Superintendent Li Sung is saying that we need a decision tonight is because if we're doing this, if we plan to do it, we need to start working on this now.
Dr. Orsoilu has...
So.
Thank you.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you so much. And I just want to thank, as a parent in the cloud, taking off my trustee hat, Dr. Shaka has done an incredible job and all the teachers have really just gone above and beyond. So it has been, they have made lemonade out of the lemons and I really want to commend them because they're all just doing phenomenal. And I know, Dr. Shaka, the next survey to come out will have, as Superintendent Li Sung mentioned, it will have more context question to get to people's motivations, because that is a critical part to moving forward. So the cloud is a big investment, right? And so institutions are very hard to dissolve once they are created. So we have created a cloud, and now if that cloud continues fully next year, then it's going to be two years of a big institution. Then in year three, is it really going to be possible to dissolve it or shift it? It's a little worrisome when you get down the road. We have to think about the intent. The intent of the cloud was, hey, there's a global pandemic. Let's get an online option that's safe and secure for those that need it and can't possibly be physically in the buildings right now. So now with the vaccines on the horizon, we have the high school, you know, half the high schoolers are going to be able to get it. Then this summer, we should get down to middle schools. Then the six to 11-year-olds are the ones that are likely to come out in like February. That's the, right now, and that can change any day, right? But February 2022 is where we're looking for like the six to 11-year-old crowd to get their vaccine. So there is, given the numbers that are in there now, that's sort of aligned, that it's really necessary, if you will, during this pandemic time for the elementary school. The high school and secondary, in my mind, is more complicated because we're looking at, to Trustee Barto's point, there's what, 550 in the secondary school of cloud, but yet there's over 1,500 in the Cohort C of the high school and middle schools when you add it all up. So that to me is a more complicated decision. So I would be comfortable, if anyone else would, to make a substitute motion that we approve the cloud campus for K through six tonight. But we, we really need to figure out this fact that Cohort C's got 1,500 people, the cloud has 500. Are the electives there? Is it worth investing in offering all these electives in a cloud when really people just want to be streaming to their high school as needed? And many of those families are going to be able to be vaccinated this summer. So that threat for them should dramatically decrease. So I'm wondering if we can be a little creative and give it the okay for the K through six, but have a little more nuance about the, the secondary, maybe just two weeks more of time to get Dr. Shaka. I don't know who's going to survey those Cohort C kids and their parents. I don't know what the plan is around that. But we need data from them if we're going to decide what virtual looks like for that secondary experience. So if it would be possible, I would like to make a substitute motion that we approve the cloud for the K through six.
TK?
Tonight.
I also would like to assume, no, I, I would like to assume that, that's an assumption that Cohort C will exist in the fall. And if we're going back full time in the fall, which is real full time, then Cohort C won't exist in the fall. So then if you really want to not be in school, the cloud would be a definite, a definite option. And as far as the finances go, or the size of the school goes, we have three high schools already that are very small. And we fund them. And they are fully funded with a principal and a assistant principal and, I mean, the staff that they need to run them. So if we have a small high school component, it, that's, that's what we're, what we're providing for our parents. And as you said, Dr. Orsoilu, COVID is not over. It's not post-COVID. Next September is not post-COVID. It's still COVID because we're still adapting to it. And I agree that it's probably not going to be till June of 2022 where we can comfortably say we're post-COVID now. So as far as disbanding it then, I, I would be comfortable saying, okay, it, we don't need it after post-COVID. We can use this alternative or this alternative, or blend these two together and create this. I, I'm okay being that creative then. But I really believe that those 40% of unsure parents, I, I, I think could make a difference. I, I know they have to move forward. You can't send out the survey if we don't approve that there's a school coming.
And I, I have a question, just for clarification for funding. And I understand that we have COVID funds that will be used to fund this for next year. But also, this is not a typical school that we have. It's not a brick and mortar school. So it's basically the cost of the Florida Virtual and some other software. In addition, the administration. But the teachers, if they weren't at the, at the clouded school, would be somewhere else. They came from our other schools. So they would just be, it would just be a kind of a transfer of that money. So we're not looking at, we've built a building, they're all there, and we'll have to dismantle it. Is that correct?
Yeah, mostly, mostly. We, we did have some staff members that transferred from our existing schools to the cloud. We also hired some new teachers. Typically, in this situation, with soft money, we would hire them under temporary contracts. So again, you know, the, the fact that we want to get approval from the board, these are the types of things that we have to be able to start doing now. We have to indicate which teachers we're going to bring back. We have to start the hiring process. And keep in mind, we just made some very big decisions to bring back elementary full time and secondary full time. And quite frankly, I, we, we need to make this manageable for our staff who are under a lot of pressure to get things done. And the more we delay and the more we try to figure out alternatives and various things, it, it puts us in a really difficult position, not just with cloud, but everything else that we're being asked to do. So I, I need to, I need to emphasize that, that this is something that, you know, we, we need to keep our focus on, on, you know, all the tasks and goals that this board has set forth for, for us.
I understand.
I just had a... I, I still had my, so...
But you didn't.
Trustee Orso...
You don't get 19 questions.
Wait, are you, are you finished with your question?
I did, but it was my time, and then I put a motion out. And so...
I asked for a second and I did not hear one on that.
We were discussing some more, so that's why I...
Okay, is there a second on trustee?
I, I had a couple of questions I need to know before I can make a second or not.
On postponing it on her, okay.
What my questions are, are we, we are required during COVID, or at least currently, to provide an online option? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And I think my, my concern comes down to Cohort C. I am fine with approving cloud campus and doing its day, but I don't want to end up in a co, you know, Cohort C was a creative thing we came up with last minute. Now we have time to plan. So let's say we've got 1,500 students who may or may not be part of that onsite campus next year. Maybe they're going to go cloud, especially with the improved offerings. I would want to, that to be, for those students to be surveyed too, so that we really know our, our picture. I think approving the cloud campus is fine. I think I would like, like I said, I just want to know how much we're spending, whether we do Florida Virtual School. And I know you can't answer those things right now because we don't know how many students there are. My concern tends to be similar to Leah's is, you always build a plan and you think that this year you're going to spend the most money because it's the first year, and then the next year you'll figure it out and you'll spend less. And that never happens. So I just want to make sure that we're being mindful of, this is another temporary solution. We've got a pool of 2,700 kids district-wide who aren't ready to be in the regular campus. How do we handle them? And does that mean we have to do Florida Virtual School? So I'm, I'm fine with approving it. I just am hopeful that will be a little bit more part of the, the process since we have the time.
Yeah. Trustee Barto, just to let you know, Dr. Shaka and I have discussed doing a survey also for the students who are at their home sites, potentially those that are in Cohort C. That would be the likely audience who potentially could be coming in cloud. So yes, that is going to be a step that we will do.
If I may, so like, one of the concerns that I have, again, with the, the numbers that said to stay at cloud. For secondary, it was only 86. For elementary, it was only 121. So for me to, for us to make a decisive decision today, when we have old information of only 121 students, I think we have heard from a variety of parents for the past year, that for elementary, it's much harder to have a digital option to do online school. I do believe we have to, and there is a state law to follow, and have a virtual option. Again, what I've been saying for a year, because we need to have a virtual option, a separate school is not necessarily needed to do that. And I think there have also been a lot of parents and community members who have shared with us, that they feel that their younger elementary students are less susceptible, they're not as worried about the free flow of virus as secondary students. So for me, having elementary come back, I, again, we don't have enough information today for both. We don't have the financial implications for me for both. So my, I would like to make the substitutionary motion that for both of these, we have a comprehensive, we have all the information that we need. And then in two weeks, which I know time is of the essence, we all know that. But I think two weeks is not two months. Two weeks is getting us information that we need to make a very large financial decision and academic decision. So I would like to make a substitutionary motion to wait on both until our regularly scheduled board meeting on the 27th.
And was there a second to that? Okay, we're going to go back to our original motion. And trustee Orsolo had some more comments?
Yeah, just, just one more about, for me, I'm very comfortable voting for the cloud for elementary right now, because I think it's definitely necessary and in line with our vision of the intent of the cloud. But to trustee Barto's point about that Cohort C is just too complicated, and it really needs more, more thought before I'd be comfortable voting for that to continue for the secondary, if indeed the numbers are so low. And it turns out, when we know those, when we survey those Cohort C kids, if none of them intend on going to the cloud, and you're left with potentially, you know, 30 kids that want to be there, it just, for that one, I, I don't feel comfortable moving forward.
And Dr. Shaka put a comment in, if you wanted to read it, surely?
Sure. Thank you. Dr. Shaka wrote, "The money spent on the Florida Virtual is for licenses for every student in the entire district, not just the cloud. We do not intend to use it for the cloud next year at this time."
That's very helpful.
That's very helpful.
Yes. Thank you, Dr. Shaka.
I mean, my follow-up to that would be then, so particularly for secondary, because Florida is for secondary, then could it just be, particularly if there's 86 or less students, that we would be able to transition them to Montevista? Because to have a separate entity, again, we do have, as trustee Matoye said, multiple very small schools that are essentially doing the same, very similar work. We have early colleges doing very similar work. And there are a lot of coastline classes that can be offered virtually. We have Montevista, which is independent and can be done independently virtually. So to create a different campus, again, to me, it, it doesn't make a lot of sense. I'm, that's why I...
And they are different and unique? Did you make a motion, a substitute motion?
Okay, we have to play, we have to play out the first motion. Okay, your motion that you approved?
Trustee Crane, pardon my stuttering. Trustee Crane's motion, I seconded.
Trustee, okay, so we have to play out that motion was to approve the continuation of cloud campus TK through 12 for the 2021-2022 school year.
But I thought the substitute motion, before we voted on the other motion, I think...
Yeah, we have to wait. So if you get a second...
Right, then we just, yeah, then we...
So we would vote on the first one.
So we vote on the first one first?
No, if she gets a second.
Okay. So you made a motion.
Yes.
Resign your motion.
I motioned to move to approve the cloud for the K through six for 21-22. Yes, TK, sorry, TK through six.
There's four...
Elementary. Elementary for the 22.
Was it the original motion first and seconded?
Yes.
It was.
Then why doesn't that play out first?
I don't know parliamentary procedure well enough. Those people retired.
If you do a substitution motion, then you, and you get a second, then you go back and you vote on the first one.
Right, that's what I was going to do.
Right. But if you, but you have to play the substitution out just in case before you vote on the first one.
Okay, so we have, we have, did I have a second on her substitution?
I will.
Okay.
Better than nothing. 50% of what I want.
Okay, so we have, we have a second, but we are going to go back and...
And vote on the first one.
And vote on the first one first. Okay, so Mrs. Amesqua, would you call Volco? And this is to approve the continuation of cloud campus, grades TK through 12 for the 2021-2022 school year.
I have a point of clarification, a question.
You what?
I have a point of clarification, I have a question.
Yes.
So let's say we approve this motion, then wouldn't the substitution motion be invalid?
No. Yeah, the substitution is invalid if this is approved.
Right.
Correct.
But it needs a second in order to be considered.
Right.
Oh, good. We didn't all, the, the people that know that didn't all retire. Thank you, Mr. Trustee Barto.
Volco.
Trustee Yelsey?
Yes.
Trustee Barto?
Yes.
Trustee Matoye?
Yes.
Trustee Anderson?
No.
Trustee Crane?
Yes.
Trustee Orsoilu?
Nope.
Trustee Wigan?
Yes.
Okay, the motion carries 5:2, and it is now approved, so we can move forward with the planning on that.
Yes, thank you very much.
I, I would just like to say, I really thank us for the robust discussion. Because even if we quote, "didn't get what we wanted," we're going to get more answers and there's going to be more information.
Well, there will be more discussion about what we're doing next year for all of the schools. And in the meantime, we can work on the cloud campus and get the surveys out and really understand. And we've also, uh, survey the Cohort C people to see what their opinions are.
And I think we, we had the best discussion on this that we've had in a long time because we got to go through all the points. So when cloud...
Yes.
Now that we do have cloud campus, we can say, well, we don't, we're not doing Florida Virtual. We know it's not super, well, we're not huge fans of it. How do we make sure that we get to where we need to be, where we provide the online option at the most affordable cost, you know, that serves the students?
And I like the fact that we have several pathways for our kids to get graduated and work with the ones that we don't even fit to, with the ones that we have. Because right now, Montevista is a different, it's more of a hands-on physical and, and digital. And early college is different. And back by Montevista is different. So I, I personally like the more difference.
And I appreciate, I appreciate Dr. Shaka and his team for what they've done this year. It's absolutely amazing what this virtual school looks like. And I truly believe in it, and I, we've heard from some of them through emails, that their children went to the cloud campus out of concerns with COVID or, you know, family concerns, whatever it is. But now they really thrive there and want to stay regardless of the COVID situation. And I think we may learn a little bit more about some of that as well.
If I may, I, I... If I may, I, I would still like the financial documents. It's our fiduciary role to have that. I would like to see that. And I really would like to know a bit more about the teachers and the staff because, again, this year, there were several positions. There are, there are a lot of support staff that were taken out of other schools and put in clouds. So I really would like to see what the plans are for that because, again, we've had to ask a lot of questions and it's, it's really hard to get that information. And I really would like more robust information. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, yes.
So President Yelsey, can I make one more comment about the cloud? I'm just, I know that we approved it with the ability for people to only leave at the end of each semester. I would just like to urge staff to consider being more flexible with the ins and outs of cloud because I think the cloud families have been extremely flexible and accommodating. They were told they'd have a small class size, then they got not only one additional cohort of friends, and then a second cohort of friends bringing classes from 20 up to 30. And they've been flexible and accommodating. I would like us to be as flexible and accommodating to them. I know right now there's about a handful or two that want to exit the cloud and they still haven't gotten confirmation that they can indeed leave after spring break. So I would like us to be as kind to them as they have been through this whole complicated process.
And so can that be part of the discussion as we move on for next year?
Or can we accommodate them now?
It's for this year, I believe what she's saying.
I thought the decision had been made that we weren't bringing more kids back onto campus because then we may not have room in some of these classrooms.
That's correct. We, we had made the decision that, you know, long ago, there was a commitment to stay in the cloud for the remainder of the year. And that's what we have indicated. It's on the Q and A. It was announced at the time we made the decision for elementary. So we are not approving transfers out of cloud back to homeschools at this time.
For this year.
For this current year, correct.
But for fall, because the distancing requirements may change, would that be something we'd be able to be more flexible with?
My recommendation and was part of the action that was just taken is that parents need to commit for a full trimester and semester. And the purpose of that, let me emphasize, is that it's for the stability of the classrooms and the impact that has on teachers, students, and schedules. And, you know, of course, we all love to be accommodating, but we need to make sure that we maintain the stability for everybody. We experienced this throughout this year. We were very flexible and accommodating as much as we could in the fall because this was all new to everybody and things were changing very quickly. And as you know, we got a lot of concerns and complaints from parents, teachers, and everybody impacted by this. So we need to be mindful, not just of the one family and the one student, but all the other students. And of course, the teachers who have a very difficult job preparing. And so, so this is something that we have talked about very deeply with our principals. And this is something that we felt very strongly about, which is why it was in this particular action.
Trustee Anderson.
Thank you. I was looking on our calendar of upcoming dates and it has on May 3rd, a study session. I don't believe that we have a topic figured out, or if we do, I am not aware of it yet. If we could have maybe a third of that be a discussion around our current alternative secondary models and schools, I would really like that. I know there have been a lot of concerns and comments about we just, we want to get the students back first. But at some point, I mean, I think for me particularly, being a graduate from, from Monta Vista and graduating early and doing independent studies, it's actually surprising to me that it is not on online. I would, I would love to see and hear what we are thinking for the future, for the intention of those schools that are both, you know, early college is wonderful and there are a lot of benefits to back Bay and Monta Vista. I just want to step, really talk through what, what that can look like and have a discussion about it because I don't think that's been done in a really long time. I'm also okay doing that later in the summer, but I just, at some point, I would like to have that discussion before another year goes by. Thank you.
Trustee Anderson, did you say May 3rd?
Yeah, it says, oh, you know, I'm sorry, that's for 2022.
I will see if they can get it scheduled.
It doesn't currently have, that's interesting. It, well, on our website right now, it starts with July 13th, 2021. So it doesn't have anything in the.
Our, our calendar is there for this year.
Yeah.
It's, it's under the calendar section.
But it's not under, ah, here we go. Yeah, so I mean, maybe one of those dates, so like May 18th, so there's enough time, or June 15th. I mean, I, we don't have to rush it, but I just, I would like, that was one of the concerns and we've had that discussion, like, we need to talk about it at some point, but I just would like to kind of land that plane.
We, we can talk about dates for, for study sessions in the, I mean, we're, obviously, if you look at the calendar, we're impacted, but we will find time as long as everybody's schedules can be somewhat flexible in that.
And I would love to maybe, if I could get the majority of the board on, to agree, I would love to expand that study session to be more about not just that, but innovation in, in education. We haven't had a good CSBA conference where we kind of pulled together all of the stuff that we've learned this year and all the stuff that we want to do going forward and really use that maybe to set some goals or a vision, what we want to do going forward, whether with alternative education. I know at some point we've talked about maybe streaming from the classroom, like Irvine does, similar kinds of things. And I think we have this really wonderful opportunity to take all of the stuff that we had to go through and learn and like say, okay, great, this is like how we turn lemons into lemonade and make something we're really proud of over the next two or three years.
Yeah, like innovation in secondary, so seventh to 12, and then also talk about like maybe, we need to, what does language look like in middle school? When dual immersions go, like all of that process, I think that would be great.
So that, we're getting on topics that probably should be part of that as another, as, as another meeting. And we will, I'll work with superintendent to figure out a time.
A consensus that works for everyone, yeah.
Yeah, I, just to add, I, I do think we need to capture the moment and move forward with it, with the theme of innovation because we've learned a lot during the COVID year, this COVID year, in technology especially. So the, the streaming is very appealing to me, moving forward and planning long-term so that we do it thoughtfully with great deliberation and discussion.
Okay, and there's a lot that goes into that. So yes, we will have to have a discussion.
It's tough on teachers.
Yes, President Yelsey, can I ask superintendent a follow-up question then? So about the cloud and exit and entry. So were you saying that the eight children that are asking to leave the cloud now, this spring, that none of them will be granted permission to exit to their homeschool?
That's currently our policy is we're not approving transfers. Of course, you know, we can look at each at a case-by-case basis, but that is our general policy right now. So I'm not going to comment on these particular cases.
Because it's, you know, only a handful out of, you know, what, 1,700 kids, only like five to 10 want to desperately leave. And, and if at this point in the year, they want to leave so much, all this talk about social emotional care that we keep saying over and over, I, I find it hard to believe that we can't accommodate. My guess is that those eight kids aren't in the same classroom at the same elementary school in the same place. I'm guessing that they're spread throughout our 30 schools and one more kid in a class here and there. I would really love if we would be able to consider accommodating them. Thank you.
Thank you. And as, as I, I hope everyone remembers, because we were in a meeting and we heard from principals that, that it was a COVID meeting, meeting that if we, if we wanted to bring back our secondary schools, it would be difficult for us to then allow transfers in because they're now working, and elementary too. When we, when we first started talking about elementary, they're working with a limited space and they have their rooms set up. And then all of a sudden, we're going to have transfers in and it.
It would have to be case by, it would have to be case by case and there's, that's the only way it could happen.
And, and I think we can do that on a case by case. Okay, we covered a lot today. I want to thank everybody. I know this was a semi-last-minute meeting. And we did want to get it in before the spring break. We, staff will get to work, but we hope everyone out there, anyone listening, teachers, parents, kids, we hope you take next week off and just take time for yourselves. Don't think about school, just relax, enjoy your families, be careful, be safe.
Wear your mask, social distance.
And come back healthy and strong because I think it's a real accomplishment for us to get all of our kids back on campus.
And thank you to all of our staff that will be working next week because in spite of what people think, our schools don't shut down during spring break. Many, many people still work. So thank you to our staff that'll still be working next week.
So do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I'll second.
Thank you. All, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Have a wonderful holiday, everyone.